No, I got back after getting stuck in San Francisco overnight, but I made it back.
How was it?
The Colorado part was really fun. They got six inches of snow while I was there and then the next day it was like sixty-five degrees. It was very bipolar weather.
I know, usually when I go back in the fall, I always get one snow, which I love, and then it's melted the next day. So I've had the best of both worlds.
Yeah.
Are we ready, Kyle?
Good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
All to order the regular meeting, virtual meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please. Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
He's here, right? I see him. He's muted.
Okay. Councilmember Carter, thank you.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
City Manager Knob?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor?
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell? Water Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Wastewater Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
Management Analyst Sanborn? And City Clerk Adams, President, thank you.
Thank you. Stand for the, I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration. The council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, no hands raised.
And I see no emails.
Thank you. I'll give it a beach or two. Now I will close public presentations. And we will move to the consent calendar. Is there any council member who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there, are there any hands raised, emails or staff that wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Don't move, I can't.
I don't move, Woodall.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Hearing none? Motion passes five zero. We will move now to the staff communications, page eighteen in our packets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garans, members of the council. You may recall the staff reported back in January that we had about a hundred and ten customers at risk of a water shut off with the end of the pandemic, the end of the grace period associated with it, and also some of the new state laws associated with water shut off processes. So I'm really, you know, proud of the staff for their level of outreach, particularly in finance, but Public Works was involved in it as well. And so that shut off list from a hundred and ten was eventually whittled down to nine shut offs this year for this, for this payment period. So roughly fifty fifty of the outstanding payments were made in full and then another half were made via a payment plan system with the Department of Finance. And so that is quite a bit of work. I really do want to say thank you in particular to Grace Homaker and the Cheryl Dillingham and the entire finance staff who did a really outstanding job of outreach on that particular issue. And frankly surprised me and a lot of other people in regards to how low we were able to get that figure. So staff has submitted the Clean California Grants, as the council may have read in the paper, there appears to be some additional funding that the governor is recommending for these programs. And that the state programs list for the highway system is out. There are no beautification Clean California projects in the Riedel area, but there are several in the Eureka area. And so that is half of the Clean California program. The other half are the locally submitted applications, which we expect and what the state has relayed to us is that they will be making those decisions on March first. So we look forward to seeing the responses to that and have our fingers crossed for a successful grant application. So with that, I will return it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions of the staff report of any staff members or myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank staff, that water shut off, I'm absolutely sure the reach, the outreach that was done was the key to making this number go from one hundred and ten to nine for shut offs. It's amazing effort that they put in and I truly am grateful that they, that we have them and that they actually made this happen. So Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, you have any?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Garans. I certainly want to echo your sentiments and thanks to Grace and Cheryl and others in the office and to Public Works Department for taking care of the water shut offs that needed to be done. And yeah, congratulations to the city for, I mean, the residents for stepping up and taking care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Ah, thank you. Same thing. Just when I saw that number, I, my, my jaw hit the ground. I never expected that we would whittle it down like that. So thank you to everybody who participated in that. And yeah, really good news. And that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Wilson?
Said, very good to the staff and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall.
Well, I agree with everything that was said about that. I was really impressed with the numbers on that. And I have a quick question for Chief Connor. Is he here?
Yes. Well, he was.
Okay. Chief, I just have a quick question. On the, the home, the home invasion that happened, do you think it was a random or do you think the person was targeted?
I'm fairly confident that the victim knew the people. He just didn't want to tell me who they were. And I think there were items that were taken that he did not disclose. Just on, on the way it was laid out. Hope that answers your question.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that answers it perfectly. And on the gentleman that was in the backyard with a knife and threatening our officers, did, is he, did he go in and is he back out? Or when, when they're threatening an officer like that, do they go to jail? Or are they just let back out?
So he initially.
Do you know who I'm talking about?
Yeah, he initially went to the hospital. We got a phone call thirty-six hours later from County Mental Health saying that they were going to release him. We've submitted paperwork to the District Attorney's Office to have him charged with the crimes he committed. But as far as I know, he is out. I do not believe he is back in Riedel at this point in time.
Yep. Okay, that answers my question and thank you and your staff for all you do because it's really important and I'm glad, I'm impressed with all you can handle. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. Actually, I want to echo that too, Chief Connor. You guys are under it a lot more than people might realize and you are greatly appreciated. And just make sure I say that. I might not say that enough. So, thank you. And so are there any hands raised or emails regarding the staff report?
I see no emails.
We have no emails? Thank you. Then we will move to special presentations. Today we'll have a presentation on the water sewer rate study, page twenty-five in our packets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garans, members of the council. And for members of the public tuning in on the city of Riedel website, the materials for tonight are posted. That includes a, the draft steady water and wastewater cost of services study, a draft proposition two eighteen letter and notice for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And then also tonight's PowerPoint is also uploaded to the website under the latest news section of the front page. So just a quick recap with the council, the last Prop two eighteen hearing for the water system, or excuse me, for the wastewater system was back in April of two thousand and fourteen. And for the water system would have been December first of two thousand and fifteen. So it is recommended that every five years, that water and wastewater systems go through a rate review and analysis to recommend the preceding five years of rates. And so we've gone through that study process with Lloyd Woodson saying with a wastewater rate study based on the ad hoc committee's request for proposal. Just some, some context I want to make sure that the viewing public is, is aware of, and I know the council's well aware of it. You know, Riedel in a lot of ways is ahead of some of our peer municipalities and even other water districts in the sense that the community enjoys the benefit of having two new processing plants for both freshwater and for wastewater. And so those plants are relatively new additions. A lot of the other jurisdictions are still grappling with older infrastructure, including some of our more immediate neighbors. And a lot of those jurisdictions are in the process themselves of updating their treatment systems and plants. We also have the advantage of a backup well system, which was covered ninety-five percent of the cost of that was covered by grant funding. So we have a backup water supply for the city to help augment the city's main supply. Out of that, what remains is the distribution and collection system. So the way that water is conveyed out to individual homes and properties, and then also how wastewater is collected from those homes and those parcels. So that's, you know, a pretty significant remainder of the issue, in particular on the wastewater side. What that leads to is additional INI. So that's inflow infiltration when it rains, additional water enters the system and creates conditions for violations for sanitary sewer overflows, those sorts of things. So that's a highly regulated area that, that we are working on currently to study through a sanitary sewer evaluation study that hopefully will make the city more, or better able to attract grant funding to help cover the costs of repairs to those, to that system. On the water distribution side, we're, we're much farther ahead and in terms of some of the main backbone of the system has been replaced in the past. And then also we have an outstanding grant application with the state of California that is currently in process for replacement of many of the pre nineteen fifty's era infrastructure related to the water system. So that will not only save staff time in terms of emergency repairs, but it also helps to save water as we do have some processed water that is leaked through leaky pipes and whatnot. This is going to become especially important over drought periods where we really need to conserve every single drop that we can from the system. So we are in process on that. There are two additional grants that the city is pursuing a water related, and this is for, again, one of our main threats to the system, which is seismic related. So we need additional storage that is seismically rated for the water system and then also to enhance the seismic reliability of the cross connection of the water system across the Eel River over to the backup metropolitan wells, a location. So the capital side for water is, is pretty well fleshed out and we're still working on on the wastewater side for this five-year period. So a lot of progress has been made and, and, and we stand to have a really, really robust system with some additional investments that we're hoping. And what is calculated in your, in the rate proposal in, in, in the packet would include ninety percent of the costs associated with that water capital improvement project being covered by grants. It's a nine-plus million dollar project that simply the city is not going to be able to finance in its entirety alone. We are, will require the assistance of the state of California to pull that particular project off. So with that for tonight, and I will just highlight it to the council that the, there is an alternative option, which is to continue the meeting to a future date, either March first or, or later. But for tonight, we have kind of five recommendations for the council, which is to receive the presentation from Catherine Seng for the water and sewer rate study, to receive public comment based upon that study to consider and approve or amend staff and consultant recommendations, which I will jump back to here in a second. And if the council is comfortable in doing so, we would recommend setting a date of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to consider the rate adjustments. And then also have the council direct staff to go ahead and mail those Prop two eighteen notices in in accordance with, with the law. And the city attorney did do a review of the Prop two eighteen notice. And has concurred, it's, it's ready to be issued if the, if the council so deems. So jumping back to number three, which is again, to consider and approve or amend staff and consultant recommendations. Based on what we have here today is, is ultimately a question of, there's two really main questions that were also posed back at the January meeting of the city council and the first report out on the water and sewer rate study. And that was whether the council was interested in moving towards a fifty fifty variable versus fixed rate structure or, or keeping it the same as it is today, which is a seventy thirty split. So seventy percent of the overall rate structure is, is fixed and thirty percent is variable. The other piece of the question is ultimately does the council want to pursue a low income discount associated with the, with the rate system? And so I do, so those are really the two fundamental questions, but obviously council may have additional questions or, or comments or need additional time. Certainly I understand that. So we'll just kind of take it one piece at a time, but I just kind of want to outline that. And again, the alternative is to continue the current meeting to a future date. So with that, we do have Catherine Seng here and Catherine, do you have the PowerPoint or do you want me to pull it up?
I have it. I'll share it right now.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members of the public. I'm Catherine Seng. As you recall, I presented at the January fourth meeting. I know that presentation was long. We had a lot of options in that presentation. But tonight, I'm going to give an overview of the water and sewer fund again and present our final recommendations that we made with Kyle and staff. And then to take a public comment from and feedback from the council. Okay. So some of these slides are the same from the previous presentation, but I just wanted to make sure everyone kind of understands why we're recommending the rates that we're recommending. Okay, again, as Kyle had mentioned, background, water rates, water rates have been increasing since two thousand and fifteen. The rate structure was last, was also last updated in two thousand and fifteen. Wastewater rates have increased by the change in the CPI. So that's about between one and almost three percent. It's two thousand and thirteen. And the rate structure was last updated in two thousand and fourteen, where we added that volume metric component. Previously, the rate structure for wastewater was just a flat fee, but in two thousand and fourteen, we added that volume metric component to it. Water and sewer funds, they're enterprise funds, which means they're self-supported from their water rates and the sewer rates. They receive no money from the general fund or no tax revenue. So the rates, so the water and sewer rates need to cover all the expenses for each of these funds. And per Prop twenty eighteen, our rate study covers the five-year period. We're proposing that the new rates will go into effect July first through twenty twenty-two. So we're proposing rates through July first of twenty twenty-six. And the five years is the maximum period that Prop twenty eighteen allows. And so an overview about Prop twenty eighteen, it's part of the California Constitution. It was voted by California voters in nineteen ninety-six. It dictates how property-related charges, which includes water, sewer rates, garbage rates, stormwater rates, how they are adopted. Prop twenty eighteen states that rates must be based on the reasonable cost of service. They also must proportionate, proportionally recover costs based on how customers take service. So each customer class can be charged differently, but there must be a reason why they're charged differently. And the revenues from rates can only be used for the intended purpose. So water and sewer rates can only be used to pay for water operating expenses and capital expenses. The general fund cannot take any revenues from the water sewer fund. And the rates can cover a maximum period of five years. There's also some procedural requirements that Kyle had alluded to. The, the main steps are that we need to conduct a rate study to show why we're raising the rates. Then we need to mail a notice to the property owners. We also recommend mailing the notice to tenants, informing them of why, of what the rate increase will be and when there will be a public hearing. So that public hearing cannot be held, well, there must be forty-five days from when the notice is mailed out before that public hearing can be held. And at that public hearing, the rates cannot be adopted if more than fifty percent of rate pairs submit a written protest. So tonight, we're not asking the city council to vote on the rates. You would actually adopt rates at the Prop twenty eighteen hearing after the close of public comments there. So these are our funded objectives. This is how we determine what the rate increases will be for the water and sewer funds. Our first goal is to meet debt service coverage. And debt service coverage is a financial measure of an agency's ability to repay outstanding debt. Basically shows, the equation is net operating revenues over total annual debt service needs to be one point two times must equal to one point two times. So that, that debt service coverage is used by state grant loan programs, also banks and also bond, bondholders to show the, an agency's ability and financial stability. So they use that as a measure of when they determine if they'll lend you money. So we need to make sure that that coverage stays at that one point two, one point two zero ratio. Our second objective is to meet fund reserve targets. We have an operating, operating reserve target of thirty percent of annual operating costs, and that's pre-standard. We're proposing a capital reserve target of a million dollars. So that's for emergency repairs. You know, and unexpected, you know, leaks or anything that comes up. We want to make sure that the water and sewer fund has money to pay for those. And a debt service reserve target, that's equivalent to a one-year's debt service. And that's a standard obligation when the city, when the city gets either loans or grants or loans. That's a pretty typical requirement. Our third goal is to maintain positive net operating revenues. This shows that each utility is covering its cost of service and it'll mean that we aren't dipping into reserves. And as you'll see, the sewer fund is, is actually operating in a deficit right now. So the rates that we're proposing is to get the sewer fund out of that operating deficit and to, to maintain the reserves. So why are rate increases needed? As I mentioned, to fund the cost of providing service. And that cost of providing service includes O and M costs, includes debt service payments, includes those debt service coverage covenants, that one point two ratio. It also includes capital improvement projects and maintaining reserve funds for emergencies. Also for, as I mentioned, the sewer fund is operating in deficit. So we're proposing rate increases to gradually get the sewer fund out of the deficit. We're proposing at the end of the fifth year, that the sewer fund will be meeting those three objectives. We also want to retain a positive credit rating to obtain those grants and loans and other debt financing. As the water fund has three, at least three applications out, so we want to be able to show that the water fund is self-sufficient and can actually repay those grants and loans. So I will start with the water rates. Here is a history of the past five years. So since two thousand and eighteen, rates have increased about two percent. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a big bump of a sixteen percent increase, but since then, rates have increased about two percent a year. And the Dinsmore Zone, those rates have increased by less than a percent each year. So I, these, this base rate is per EDU and that EDU stands for Equivalent Dwelling Unit, which is equivalent to a residential home. So your water rates are composed, the components for your water rates, there's two components. There's that fixed charge where all customers are charged the same fixed charge per EDU, so per home. And this is the charge that all customers are charged regardless of any water use. Because even if a customer doesn't use any water, the city still encourages costs associated with maintaining the ability or readiness to serve each customer. And currently, the fixed charges generate about seventy-four percent of total water sales revenue. The second component is the consumption rate per CCF. That CCF is actually, is equivalent to seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So all customers are billed per CCF. And the, meaning you're based on what the water use, the water that you actually use. This, this component of the rate is supposed to recover costs that vary based on the amount of water used, such as utilities and chemicals. And currently, the consumption rate generates about twenty-six percent of total water sales revenue. There's also a third charge, and that's for the Dinsmore Zone charge. Those are for about twenty-seven customers. This is an additional flat charge that these twenty-seven customers pay to cover the cost for the additional operating capital costs the city encourages to provide water service to this area. So here's a summary of the water fund reserves. As at the beginning of this fiscal year, July first, two thousand and twenty-one, there's about two point eight million or two point nine million water reserves. That's a good amount. The city has been putting away additional reserves, knowing that, that, knowing that they will have to contribute a portion of of the capital, a portion of the, a portion of the, of the funds for the capital projects such as the the, I'm sorry, the distribution project as well. such as the, the, I'm sorry, the distribution project as well as the Eel River project. I'll go into those in the following slides. But the city has been planning ahead, so that's why the result, water reserves are in good shape. So here's a summary of the past three years of the net operating revenues, the operating or revenues. The water fund's been doing pretty well. This year, for the budget, we're projecting net revenues about 72,000. And in prior years, it's been 550,000. So that's the amount that has increased the reserve, total reserve amount. So the water fund's been doing pretty well. So here is a summary of our water operating expenses, which is what we used for our projections. You'll see we used the budget 2021 as our base year. And for salaries and benefits, we're projecting that they will increase about 5% each year over the next five years. For all other expenses except for chemicals, they're expected to go about 3% each year. So for chemicals, I know last time we discussed a 600% increase, but we discussed it with staff, and we think that a 300% increase is more realistic. So that actually will increase from 18,000 to about 73,000 next year. So overall, we're projecting for 2022, 23, about 11% increase in operating expenses. But for the future years, on, on average, total operating expenses are projected to increase about 4% each year. So here is a summary of the water CIP that Kyle had, had given us, explained earlier. So this, the red box, these are the major projects that we are looking at that need either grant or loan funding. So the distribution system upgrade project, that's projected at 9.5 million. And the city has applied for a grant with the State Water Resources Control Board. For the Eel River Crossing Pipeline retrofit, as well as Douglas Tank size, McRetro Fit, the city has applied for FEMA grants. And those are local funding, it's a, it's a 25% local funding contribution. So we're hoping that if the city receives those FEMA grants, that they won't have to pay 75% of those projects. But the, the big project is this distribution system upgrade project at 9.5 million. So overall, the water utility needs about 15 million in CIP projects over the next five years. Now here is a summary of our projected debt service for the Eel River and Douglas Tank retrofit projects. We're projecting that the amount of, the portion that the city will have to pay for is about 25%. So for the Eel River, it'd be 875,000, and Douglas Tank is 475,000. And we're projecting the loan terms of 30 years at a rate of 3%, which means that our annual debt service or loan payment is 45,000 for the Eel River and 24,000 for the Douglas Tank project. And we're assuming that the first payment is due one year after project completion. So in our projections, we assume that debt service doesn't kick in for these two projects until 2027, 28. Okay, for the distribution project, that 9.5 million, the State Water Resources Control Board asked us to look at these three scenarios. The first scenario is 100% loan. If the city had to pay back the entire 9.5 million, we projected the loan terms of 20% at 0% interest. And the annual loan payment or debt service payment would be 475,000. The second scenario that the State Water Resources Control Board asked us to look at was a 90% grant and 10% loan option. So the city would have to repay $950,000. And same loan terms of 20 years with the interest rate of 0%. And with that annual loan payment would be about 48,000. The third scenario is 100% grant, so the city wouldn't have to pay back any of that. So we're projecting that the first payment would be due one year after project completion, and that is projected in 2025, 26. So after some discussion with staff, we have decided that scenario two seems like the most realistic option. So we are recommending that we proceed with the rates for scenario two, the 90% grant, 10% loan option. And that, in my January 4th presentation, I know I presented a lot of options, basically six options. So here, we're recommending the scenario two, the 90% grant, 10% loan. We're recommending to keep that 70% fixed, 30% variable revenue recovery. Currently, it's 74, 26, but we're just, we've readjusted the rates, so that's 70, 30. And we're proposing to keep the current fixed revenue allocation because that, it keeps the revenue more stable for the water fund. If the, the more revenue collected in the fixed charge, that means, yeah, it keeps the revenue more stable, considering we're not quite sure which, which, which scenario the state is going to recommend. Although we, we are hoping for scenario two. We do, we do think that just keeping with the current fix versus variable ratio would be more predictable in terms of revenue, and let's see a less impact on customers. So here, I know there's a lot of text. These are just the cash flow assumptions that we assumed. I'll kind of just go through them quickly. We're assuming minimal growth, about half a percent each year. But we do project that total consumption will increase about 2% each year because there are some projects coming in, in the next two or three years that will increase water use. We are, we are proposing to use the late fee revenues for a low-income discount. And those are projected at 25,000 each year. In terms of expenses, salaries and benefits are increased 5% each year, and all their expenses except for chemicals are increased 3% each year. And the current, the only current debt obligation is a 2005 SRF loan, and that's for 2.72 million. Total annual debt service is 136,000, and that'll be paid off in 2030. So here's a summary of compares the projected water rates and the different goals for each of the scenarios. I also included a no-rate increase option, just to show what would happen to the water fund if the council did nothing. So this top box shows what the projected rate increases would be. So for no-rate increase, it's zero. For that 100% loan option, the rate increases would be 3.12%, followed by 2.4%. For our recommended option, that 90% grant, 10% loan, we're recommending 3% annual rate increases. And for scenario three, the 100% grant option, we're recommending the 2% rate increases. And in terms of debt service coverage, you'll see that for each of the scenarios, we need debt service coverage, except if the city did not increase rates. In that last year, we're projecting that the water fund would miss its debt service coverage. And goal two, meet water reserve fund targets. For all those scenarios, we wouldn't meet the reserve fund targets in all of the years. And goal three, maintain positive net operating revenues. So for each of the scenarios, the water fund would, would remain in the black. So here are the proposed water rates. As you see, this base rate goes down slightly. And that's because we, what we did, the cost-of-service allocation, we updated, you know, the number of EDUs and water use. So the, the actual base rate actually decreases for the first four years, actually. But you'll see that the consumption rate actually increases. And the Dismar charge, we're proposing to increase 3% each year. And I'll show you what that actually means in terms of bill impacts. So here, I show the bill impacts for monthly water use of 300 cubic feet, 500 cubic feet, which sexual, which is the residential average monthly use. I'll also show for 2000 cubic feet and 4000 cubic feet. So for this average user, the current bill, water bill, is $65.63 with our proposed rates, will actually go down $62.12 and then gradually increase to $67.69 by the end of the fifth year. You'll see this first year, the rate increase for customers varies. It actually, it'll vary based on their actual use due to the updated cost of service allocation. But then going forward, the bill is projected to go up about 2% each year. And that's also because we factored in growth and the increase in consumption. So this is a chart that shows what the proposed monthly water bill for a typical resident customer using 500 cubic feet a month. So it's currently 65, 63, $65.63. And it goes down, but eventually increases back up in 25, 26. And here's a monthly water bill survey comparing the city's current rates with the proposed rates with surrounding agencies. It's currently, we're in a little bit of the higher end here, at $65.63. And we're proposed, the proposed rate, we're going to be towards the middle. But I also do want to mention that many of these agencies will also be increasing their rates also. So we are proposing to implement a water low-income discount to comply with Prop 2018, which cannot use water rate revenues from one group of customers to subsidizing another group of revenues. However, the city can use non-rate revenues, such as general fund revenues or interest earnings or late fees to fund a low-income discount. And based on, and we're proposing to use the PG&E care program requirements as qualification, and that would help his staff and ease administrative burden. So based on the PG&E care program, we're estimating about 700 customers, which is about half the customer base, would be eligible. And total water late fee revenues, about $25,000 for the entire year. So what we did is we just divided that 25,000 by 700 customers, and the annual discount for customers, about $35.70. On a monthly basis, that's about $3. So we're proposing a $3 monthly discount for low income. And based on that average bill, with that $62.12 that proposed, based on the proposed rate, that's about a 5% discount. And we're also recommending that the city review the program annually to make sure that there is actually enough of revenue to cover the discount. Okay, that's what I have for the water side. Do we want to take questions now, or did you want me to go proceed with the sewer, sewer rates?
I can, council, I will ask your, do you want to question in the middle? Or do you want to wait till the end? It's like, speak up.
No, no questions, Deborah.
Okay, so go ahead. We'll, we'll wait to the end then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sewer rates, I'm going to go through the same thing. So here's the history of the historical and current sewer rates. The sewer rates have been increased by the change in the CPI since 2013. So that's about between 1% and 3% each year. And I want to point out that there's that, that fixed monthly charge for EDU that all customers pay. But there's also a volume rate that was added in 2014, and that's based on customer class. So that's four different customer classes. That's low, domestic, medium, and high. So low-strength customers are car washes, office, retail stores, schools without cafeterias. Domestic strength is residential, hotel, mobile home parks, churches, gas station, bars without dining. Medium strength is beauty shops, medical offices, and dental offices. And high-strength customers are restaurants and markets with food prep and bakery. So there's two rate components that fixed charge. All customers are charged the same fixed charge per EDU. And this is the minimum charge for all customers. And currently, the fixed charge generates about 70 to 71% total sewer service revenues. The second component is that volume rate, which varies based on customer strength, and it's charged per 100 cubic feet of consumption. It's actually based on your average consumption during the winter months of December, January, and February. Residential customers are considered domestic strength, and your consumption is capped at 1500 cubic feet per month. The volume rate currently generates about 30% of total sewer, sewer service revenues. And here's just sewer fund revenues. As the beginning of this fiscal year, there's about 2.4 million in total sewer fund reserves. And that's an increase from the prior year of about 8%. However, as you'll see on this slide, this is a spray of sewer net revenues since 2018, 19. For the past about two years, this sewer fund has been operating in a deficit. It's projected to also be in a deficit at the end of this year. So this, this amount actually comes out of sewer reserves. So when we're operating in deficit to cover those costs, we're pulling from reserves. And here are our projected sewer operating expenses, the same escalation factors that we use for water, 5% for salaries and benefits. All other expenses is 3% per year, except for chemicals, which we reduced to 300, a 300% increase. So that means that for this year, the budget was 25,000. We're projecting that chemicals will increase to about 100,000 for next year. So for next year, total operating expenses is about to increase about 11%. But going forward, total operating expenses are projected to increase 4% overall. Here's a sewer CIP, which is a lot less than the water CIP. We're projecting about 525,000 in sewer CIP projects over the next five years. This doesn't include the, the projects that'll come out of the sanitary sewer evaluation study. These are the only, these are the projects that will be funded by rates over the next five years. And these are the projects that the city has currently identified and flushed out already. So it's really the UV disinfection, SCADA upgrades, boiler and the INI reduction. So at the January 4th meeting, I presented four different rate options. We're recommending to go with scenario two, which means to meet those three goals by 2026, 27. A scenario one was the inflationary rate increases of 4%. And as you, I'll show you in the next slide, you don't meet those goals with just 4% rate increases. And we're also recommending to stay with that 70% fixed, 30% variable split to minimize the impact on customers. For our sewer cash flow assumptions, they're same. All revenues, sewer service revenues are estimated at 1.27 million. That's our base amount. All of the revenues are increased about 3% each year. We're also recommending to use service late fees to fund a low-income discount. And growth has been estimated about half a percent each year. For expenses, salaries and benefits are increased by that 5% annually. All, all other expenses except for chemicals are increased about 3% each year. And the only current debt obligation is a loan from the California Department of Water Resources for 6.9 million. Total debt service payment is 302, about 303,000, and that'll continue through, through 2020, 2043, 44. And here is our sewer scenario comparison. I have also included like a no-rate increase option, just to show what will happen if the city does not increase sewer rates. So are the proposed rate increases, no rate increases are zero. That scenario one, the inflationary rate increases to meet that operating cost inflation at 4%. And then scenario two is to meet the financial goals by 2026, 27. And we're recommending 8% rate increases. The goal one, to meet debt service coverage, you'll see, we do not meet debt service coverage under the no-rate increases or the inflationary rate increases. But with scenario two, those 8% rate increases, we will meet debt service coverage starting in 2024, 25. And that second goal, to meet the sewer reserve fund targets. Currently, yes, we are meeting our targets. But with, with no rate increases, we're projecting that by 2023, 24, we won't be meeting those targets. For scenario one, by 2024, 25, we won't be meeting those targets. But with the 8% rate increases, we will meet the targets all five years. Oops, apologies. For that goal three, to maintain positive net revenues, only scenario two will meet that goal, and that'll begin in 2025, 26. So if we don't do anything, the, that deficit will just continue to grow. Here are our proposed sewer rates. The fixed monthly charge, we're proposing, the current charge is $52.28. And we're proposing an increase to $54.28 on July 1st of next year. And we'll increase to $72.40 by the end of the fifth year. And we'll increase to seventy-two dollars and forty cents by the end of the fifth year. Here are some sample bill impacts. This shows some bill impacts for a low user using 300 cubic feet, an average user using 500 cubic feet, and a high user using that 1,500 cubic feet, which is the max for residential customer. So for the average user, the current bill is 75 dollars and sixty-eight cents. It'll increase about 6% on July 1st to eighty dollars and seventeen cents. Then going forward, it increases about 8% each year, all the way to 107 dollars and sixty cents. And again, this first year, this rate increase, the actual percentage varies due to that updated cost-to-service allocation, where we updated the number of customers and flow by customer. So that first year is kind of an adjustment period. And here is a graph of the proposed monthly sewer bill for a typical residential customer with the average winter water use of 500 cubic feet, seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, and it increases to 107 dollars and sixty cents. Your survey comparing the city's rates with surrounding agencies. Currently, up here at eight dollars and seven, oh, I'm sorry, at seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, with the proposed rates will increase, still be on the higher end. But all these other agencies will likely also be increasing their rates also. Same with the water, we're proposing that sewer low-income discount. It's, we're proposing use the late fees revenues, about 25,000. So that's a $3 monthly discount per customer. And based on the average sewer bill, the proposed average sewer bill, that's about a 4% discount. And this shows a combined monthly bill with the water and sewer. The water's blue, sewer's the green. So currently, a combined bill is, combined monthly bill is 141 dollars and thirty-one cents. For July 1st, 2022, that bill will go up to about 142 dollars and 29 cents. And then going forward, the total increase is about 5%, overall is about 5% each year for this typical residential customer using 500 cubic feet of water. And the next steps, as well today, we're presenting our final recommendations to city council. We're asking council if they would like to proceed with the Prop 18 process. If so, the city will mail out the Prop 18 notices by March 1st. That gives us that 45-day period before April 19th is where we're proposing to hold a Prop 18 hearing. And at that hearing, if there's no majority protest, the city council can vote to adopt the rates. And if the rates are adopted, the first rate increase will go into effect on July 1st, 2022. Okay, that concludes my presentation. I'm ready to take comments or questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you very much for your presentation. Glad to have you here. Very, very clear presentation, we appreciate it. I'll reach out to council member Woodall.
Yes, I'm taking a look at the water low-income discount and the sewer low-income discount. And when I first looked at it, I thought, oh, okay. And then I started looking at the numbers. The number of PG&E cares, acts, people that would be eligible for this. There's 700 people that would qualify in our town. Now, we know that we probably won't have 700 people that will come down, but let's use 700 as the number. So if we're giving each of them $6, that's three for the water and three for the sewer a month. Over a year, that would come to almost $50,000. And right now, that money for the late fees are flowing into our water and sewer funds. And I really think the fact to give them $3 a month, it's almost that for water and then three for sewer. It's almost like a token amount, you know, a goodwill gesture, not even enough to buy a hamburger fries and Coke at McDonald's. And so I almost think it would be more beneficial to let that money go back into our water and sewer funds. And you know, that would, that would, money that goes in there would benefit all of our community in a way. And I think it would be better spent going back into the water and sewer funds than, than the discounts. And that's just the way I feel. My other thought is, to set up these funds, that's going to take a lot of staff time. Each year, they'll have to go through it again, and that money won't come out of the late fee revenues. That will come out of the regular, our regular budget. And I was wondering if I could ask Catherine how, Catherine, wow, Cheryl, how much trouble she thinks that would be. And I'm concerned about having to do it every year. And then what if we don't have enough to do it, we don't do it? And if maybe she could explain that part? And also whether, if we did those changes, if she would be able to get them on the AccuFund system?
I think that was for Cheryl? So we did check with AccuFund, and AccuFund does say that they can do that discount. So, so I just got that information today. And it will definitely be additional work for finance to implement this program, because we've never done it before.
Okay, well, that's, that's just my thought. I just think I would hate to take that money away from our water and sewer funds when so much more could be done with the $50,000 for everyone, rather than that small $3, $6 a month for low income. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Wilson?
I'm glad that you were able to, to lower the, took another look at the, at the chemical cost, and that that was lowered, which I guess explained, my one question was, why did the price go down? When, I believe, I understand it to be that being the reason for the first year or so. And for the amount of issues that we have, this isn't that bad an increase really compared, compared to all of the other expense. So I don't like things going up, but I, I think this is a...
Is there Frank?
I guess not. Deborah?
Yeah, I, I think we lost your end of your, we lost the end of your sentence.
I don't know, but the PowerPoint just stuff really killed the bandwidth down here where I live. So that's why I keep dropping out, I don't know if I'm coming or going. Anyway, I, I think it's a, it's a fair increase for the, for everything that's going on. It's, it's a good, it's a, it's a good, good fix. That's all.
Thank you. Council member Carter?
Thank you. I definitely don't have any questions, so it's very thorough and clear, and I appreciate that. I, I like keeping it the 70 fixed, 30 variable, and just try to keep it as much the same as we can and minimize the impacts on residents. But no, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Deborah. I want to thank Catherine for a good, very good presentation. And I support the use of late payments for decreasing the monthly billing for those that are low income. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I just wondered, so the, the 70-30 versus the 50-50, it's more, it's about stability? That, I mean, that's ultimately what, why do we would go with the 70-30 versus the 50-50? Is because to have the, the funds as stable as possible going forward, not knowing what the future brings?
Yes, and also considering there's a drought, well, we're in a drought. It does seem to make sense to keep the fixed revenue, the percentage of fixed revenues higher, given we don't know how long this drought will continue on.
Okay, thank you. And the 300% chemical increase, why, just out of curiosity, isn't it 300% every? I mean, why does it so drastically change from this year, there's 300%, but then the following years, is it, is it because we're gonna buy all of them and then have leftovers? I mean, it, it seems like it would be a consistent number. So I'm just trying to get clarification so we can all be clear.
I think I'll, I'll jump in on, on that. So I think there's a high degree of uncertainty regarding the chemical costs. And so certainly, we hope that the number will come in lower than that. But certainly, some, you know, when you look at inflation over the past year, on average for the consumer, the average American consumer, that increase has gone up by about 7.5%. And, but in different sectors, for example, like construction, you can see significantly higher cost increases for different, you know, types of products. And in this particular case, what we have been seeing is a pretty dramatic increase in costs associated with chemicals. Now, we don't know if that is going to settle out, or if that is a, a permanent increase. But by setting that, that figure at that 300% level, if, if the costs come in lower, and we may know more information by April 19th as to what exactly that is. If it's, if it's lower than that, then certainly we would be adding that as an adjustment, a downward adjustment, which is the only type of adjustment we would be able to do for, you know, for the, for the rates. And I don't know if Randy has anything additional to add, or Derek?
Mayor, council. So I had a phone conversation with the chemical supplier. And from my understanding, he is still working up numbers for us for the next year. But the reason for the rates as being changed, the increase is so dramatic, is basically the barges that they're getting from belt sourcing is, their per container is like $33,000 for one container, where normally it's never even been that close. And basically, it's the manpower loading and unloading, getting this chemicals to the facilities. Transporting has been ridiculous as far as trucking costs, and the manpower to get efficiently moved from one point to the next. So until this all settles down, the numbers are just extremely high at this point. And it's kind of uncertain to see where they're gonna end up in the next year, these two years. But that helps, that's all I have, thank you.
That does. Thank you for your response, Randy and Kyle, thank you. I, I just, I just felt like it was such a, even though it was lower than the number before, it was still a high percentage. And I thought, anyone who's listening or going online to look at the documents, that a fuller explanation would be helpful, because we're gonna, we're gonna be explaining a lot. So we, you know, as full of explanation as we can get, that, that's why I wondered that question. So thank you for, for that. And I, I, I support the low-income option, just because even though it's only $6, sometimes $6 makes a world of difference. I mean, you know, it depends on where you are in life, but sometimes $6 makes the difference between, you know, a cheaper burger and, you know, a pricey burger.
Not even the cheapest burger.
So anyway, are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Shocking. Okay, well, is there a motion? Is there a motion to, let me get back to where, authorize? I got my papers all mixed up for the, is there a motion for the five points that the staff recommended? And the, and then I think the low-income option is also a part of it. Is that true, city manager?
So based on, we did get council member Woodall's comments. I have not heard a concurrence to council member Woodall's comments, but I have heard two council members in support of the, of the low-income discount. That would be Mayor Garns and Mayor Protem Johnson in support.
So how would we word that? How, how should the motion be worded to either, because it either has to be in it or not?
So the...
Deborah?
Yes.
At this point, I will go ahead and go with what everybody else wants, so we can just go ahead and make a motion on all five, if you'd like.
Okay.
So Mayor Garns, if I may?
Yes, please. Thank you, Julie.
The recommended motion would be to set a date of April 19th, 2022, to consider the rate adjustments per Proposition 218, and direct staff to mail 218 notices in accordance to the California Constitution, Proposition 218, with the city attorney's review and concurrence. And I will just also state, there were a couple of minor typos in the, in the 218 notice that we would like to correct. But that would, that would be the, the motion.
Is there a motion?
I so move.
We have a motion. Thank you, we have a motion by council member Woodall, is there a second? A second, Carter? We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Council member Carter?
Yes.
Council member Wilson?
Frank, you're muted.
Council member Wilson?
He might be bandwidthed out right now.
Okay, we'll skip him then.
Yes, give him comeback.
Council member Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes.
And back to council member Wilson.
Here, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0. And so thank, thank you, Catherine, for coming. We appreciate you being here, I'm glad to see you're in good health.
Okay, thank you.
We will see you in April, yes.
Yes, in April, thank you, have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Okay, and now we will move on to special call items. Authorize staff to pursue grant funding or other non-city-funded acquisition of property for Riedel Community Forest, page 188 in our packet, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garns, members of the council. As, as you may recall, as part of the city's economic development plan and the immediate action plan associated with it, part of the direction to staff was to look at the creation of recreational assets for the community. And, you know, the council's been working very hard on that in terms of the, just on the consent cap, or later, the next agenda item will be the approval of, of the lot for the basketball court and dog park, for the half-court, I should say. And we have also been working with the ad hoc committee related to Davis Street Park. And then we've also been, staff has been investigating a number of different parcels throughout town that we've identified as, you know, you know, having space for recreational amenities and having a key location. And so for that process is... And so for that process has has been. We have not gotten support from property owners for for that. However, just recently in in speaking with Mr. Joe Enos, who owns and co owns. Properties on the hillside just above Davis Street and Pacific. So the hillside that is meadow land that converts over into forest land where the Douglas Street tank is. In conversations with Mr. Enos, who has listed his properties currently. He is amenable to the creation of kind of an outdoor public hiking space. And recreational opportunity for the community. So. The idea would be is the similar to a community forest type development where there would be hiking trail amenities. And there is potential space there to add different recreational amenities at the site. Access will be an issue in terms of vehicular access and whatnot. But those are all. You know, issues that that could be addressed over time with the particular site. So if anybody's been up there at the Douglas Tanks, it's quite a view. It's a really neat view of the of the community. And there's certainly a lot of old logging skid trails and whatnot that could be relatively easily converted over. To hiking trails. So the 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 parcels under question are are three contiguous parcels on the hillside. There, it's approximately forty acres. Around the Douglas Tank site. And. And again, you know, this is the these types of facilities are common in Humboldt County. Obviously, Arcata has its community forest, Eureka has a fairly large Sequoia Park facility. Fortuna as well. And Russ Park over in our neighbor in jurisdiction of Ferndale. So it's it's not uncommon to to see that particularly on the North Coast. And indeed, in fact, McKinleyville Community Services District north of Arcata is also. Looking into and developing their own community forest. So some of the concerns kind of already outlined, and I think the council is well aware of this, in particular with the dog park issue. Where we're utilizing, we we are acquiring land, we're repurposing existing city owned facilities for it. So there was no property acquisition for that park facility. Similarly, we with the council's prior directions in terms of of really prioritizing street repairs. As a main function of general fund activity and promoting economic development, which we're rolling out. Between those two main priorities of the council, there's very limited city funds to acquire property. So the idea here. Is that we wanted to discuss this specific site with the council. And get the council's authorization to go ahead and start pursuing. And looking into an advertising, an interest in the parse in these parcels. For for recreational amenities, conservational amenities, so on and so forth. To try to leverage outside funding for the acquisition of of this. Property for not necessarily for the city, but for the use of the general public as a hiking facility. There could be a number of different ways in which this has gone about through various land trusts. Different groups, the city has identified some. Potential programs offered through the state of California through the recreational trails program and Habitat Conservation Fund. For this, these types of acquisitions. And so this, you know, could be a very long process. The property may well sell to a private. Individual in the meantime, but we did want to get started on on trying to pursue and find. A grant opportunities to see if this purchase could be realized. So again. You know, we want to try to pull together a acquisition plan that certainly minimizes or eliminates. You know, city financial exposure to the acquisition costs associated with 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 these the three particular parcels. But with that, I will return it to the mayor and see if there's any questions or comments. And actually, in your packet, and I apologize, towards the back of your packet, you'll see a fairly large. Map that's attached to your packet. That outlines the the potential acquisition. And just looking at the map, just to make sure, you know, folks up there, because there's two maps. One just represents the Joe Enos. Properties. One also represents the upper forest area. Which also includes apparently a fairly level bench up there. And we believe that the property owner there would also be amenable. To some sort of a purchase of that particular timberland. So so with that, again, I will return it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions or comments to staff.
Thank you, City Manager. Very, it would be very exciting. I will start with Councilmember Carter.
Thank you. I'm glad you started with me. I just love seeing those words, Rio Del Community Forest. I just think that's amazing, and this should absolutely be something we pursue. And I'm like, already making plans. So, yeah. Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Do you understand you to say that the property is being listed for sale besides the being offered to the city?
Correct. So it is. It is on the open market. If you go to Realtor dot com. It is listed there, and I forget who is who is representing the. That property. But it is listed on Realtor dot com.
Is it? Is it listed as timberland? Or just land?
I'm not sure. There there is a timber component, obviously, and then there's a grazing component as well.
All right, can I just? Usually, a lot of times you can, people buy it and log it, and then they can. It'll be, it'll be for sale. Once you've logged it, it's not going to be logable again for. Another twenty years, so. There's that component that logging could pay for the price of land. And with the land or or you could work something with a someone to purchase the land. After it's logged, it's, it wouldn't be as great a hiking area, but. It's going to be hard to compete with a logger who is able to buy stuff and do that. Procedure. That's how a lot of them do it. It's it's it'd be nice to have it, so I'd say move ahead and see what you can come up with.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. I'm certainly for any walking, biking, jogging trails that we can add to the city's. Inventory. Yeah, I'm I'm for it. Sounds great.
Councilmember Woodall?
Well, I'm for it, too. Of course, I'd have to get in shape to be able to walk. I like all the trees. I'd hate to sell the trees to have a look, you know, to lower the price, because the trees would, trees are what makes part of that for me. Is to be able to get in the trees, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with that tree statement you just made. I am super excited that it could happen. It would make me a very happy person. So I too am completely supportive of the city staff going forward and trying to find grant funds or. Whose ever funds, whoever outside funds you can find will be great. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Thank you. Then I would ask for a motion to authorize staff to pursue grant funding or other non city funded acquisition of the property. For a community forest. Is there a motion?
No moves, Carter.
Okay, is there a second?
I second Woodall.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone. And now we will move on to the second reading by title only and adoption of resolution number one, five, two, four, dash, two, zero, two, two. And ordinance number three, eight, nine, dash, two, zero, two, two. Approving zoning and land use designation of city owned parcel located south of Painter Street, east of Ireland Avenue. North of Center Street and west of Highway one oh one as public facility. Page one ninety one in our packets, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garns. We are recommending that the council. Receive a report designating this give back parcel from Caltrans. At its location. That we open a public hearing, receive any public input and deliberate. Then the council would would close and approve the ordinance. As reported at the February first meeting, the parcel and portions of many. Others were originally acquired by Caltrans in the mid nineteen seventies for the realignment of Highway one oh one. After the construction, Caltrans deeded the excess properties back to the original landowners in the city. And after the parcel was deeded back to the city, it was never zoned. So again, this was brought to staff's attention as part of the grant application to establish. A basket, a half basketball court and dog park on the parcel. And as such, staff is recommending that the parcel be zoned and designated a public facility. So this is a second and final reading. And again, we recommend to open for public comment and then move to adopt Resolution fifteen twenty four.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Lost Door.
Oh.
There we go.
Yeah, I'm I'm certainly for this, and you know, when it comes time to make a motion, I'd love to make a motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson?
I'm for it. Good idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter?
Yes, for me again.
Okay, and I'm I'm all for it. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are no emails.
Okay, hearing none. And is there a motion to approve? The second reading and adoption of Resolution number fifteen twenty four, twenty twenty two, and ordinance number three, eighty nine, dash, twenty twenty two?
Don't move by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Woodall.
Nope, or Woodall, whoever.
We have a second.
Can take whoever.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Hey. And now we move on to council reports. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you. I have a a couple of comments. Let's see, we will be having a. Zoom meeting for H cog on Thursday, but at that meeting, we will be have the opportunity to approve. Distribution of Transportation Development Act funds. And these funds are based upon one quarter cent of sales tax. And as you may know, that things are booming in California, there's been a lot of retail activity. And our TDA funds will increase by about thirty percent, up to one hundred and forty two thousand. For year twenty twenty two. Also. Next month on the second of. March, there'll be a Zoom meeting, the stakeholders, and will be, it's be a relatively short meeting, an hour long, but we'll be discussing potential mitigation. And. It'll be, should be interesting, because. It's hard to really define what mitigation you can apply until you know what damages are done. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. The city now has an Instagram page. That's my big news. So there's, there's only a couple of posts on there. I've been out of town, but we have forty nine followers already. So if anybody's interested, it is just all lowercase, visit Rio Del Scotia on Instagram. I also set up a Facebook page, and all I have to do is link them together, and that'll be up and going. And I made some contacts at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, people who are really interested in collaborating on this, and so that's wonderful. And I do want this to be a collaborative thing. So if any of you have any ideas or lovely pictures or things that you think you would like outsiders to see, let me know. And you might even be hearing from me as I start asking questions about the history of the city, you know, things like that, that we could put up there and be fun. But yeah, other than that, that was my big news. I haven't really been to any other meetings since our last one, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Well, that's that's fun. Now, is that when you say Rio Del Scotia, is it just one word?
All one word.
Scotia, no?
No punctuation. They won't let you do that, as much as it pains me.
Okay, thank you. Well, that is big news. So congratulations on doing that, and thank you very much for doing that for the city.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah. Councilmember Wilson?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Okay, first question, did on the visit Rio Del Scotia for the Instagram, you said it's all lowercase?
All lowercase, one word.
Great.
And as I told seconds ago, we have fifty followers now, just.
Well, you'll have fifty one when I get off the phone. I went to the the fire department meeting, and I have a couple of things here there. The the yearly numbers for calls, and I'll go over them. Vegetation fires, thirty, structure fires, twenty three, other fires, one hundred and twenty seven. Vehicle accidents, forty nine, medicals, four hundred and sixty eight. Hazmat. Hazmat calls, I don't know what the MS FMS is for, twenty seven, public assists are fifty eight. Others eleven for a total of seven hundred and ninety two calls last year. A busy fire department. They're also looking into buying a new. Fire truck. That fire truck will go to Red Crest, and then they'll sort of take the Red Crest one to Scotia and and move it on that way. But it's going to be a nice truck. They brought up the the bathrooms at the park are really heavily graffitied. So they want to start locking them again at night and opening them in the morning, which our officers were doing before COVID. But when COVID came, they just closed them period. But now they asked me if we could ask our officers if they could do that again. So I talked to chief about that, and he said they would. And then on. The annual. The annual dinner for the Fire Protection District, and I'm sure all the council members and some of the staff has received an invitation. And I hope, I hope we can all attend, because I like to show our support for the fire district. And that's February twenty sixth at the Scotia Lodge. We have a nuisance abatement committee meeting tomorrow. It's at three P M. It's Zoom, and if you'd like to call in and address anything. You call City Hall, and they'll give you the numbers to call in on Zoom. And other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually a very informative update, and thanks for all the fire information, the fire department information. It's awesome. I attended a. A community services league of. Community Services League of Cities Policy Committee meeting and just going over some of the different legislate, legislation that's coming up and just looking at different ways to move forward and our developer work plan dealing around youth, youth empowerment, seniors, outdoor spaces. And there was one more, emergency hazardous hazardous response, emergency response, that's it. And so it was a very good meeting. And that was the meeting, the only one that I attended. It was Zoom. And I think that's my full report for this evening. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Meeting adjourned, and we will see you, at least some of us in chamber, on March 1st. Oh, I'm sorry, wait. Everybody, hold on. Amanda, did you have something?
No, I'm saying, yes, I'll see you.
I thought you saw your, I thought you were saying, wait, I have something to say.
I'm a, I'm one of these. I know.
All right, then. The meeting is adjourned until March 1st, which will be a hybrid meeting, some in, some out. And we look forward to our next time in chambers. Take care, everybody, and have a good rest of your week and rest of the month. Meeting adjourned.